One minute's kicking in, so we can get out 3:30.
If I can... 6:30.
Yeah.
No comments.
Oh, do you?
I have nothing to say.
I do have, I do have one.
Come in, come in.
Over there, over there, next to, over there next to the church somebody. I asked him before you might remember that.
Uh, just, just reference. Yes. Yeah. I saw the email. And I was gonna add just a comment about, or a question about fireworks. The hour is now.
We're ready.
We're ready.
I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Just by way of explanation, as we get started, this is a, the world's record shortest agenda.
Thank you.
And if I can keep Mayor's comments to all roll.
I've already said I have no comments tonight, so.
We're, we're, I'm shooting the over, the over-under for this meeting at 6:30, which would be a record for us.
I'll take that, Ben. No.
I can name that song in 29 minutes.
I already told it.
Let's see, if, if we could please stand for a moment of silence, if there was ever a moment when we need to reflect along with all of our fellow citizens, it's now. And then kind of keep the leaves in the pledge of fact.
Moment of silence, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the roll?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Eardley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter? Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
We have a quorum. We do not, you'll notice, have a city attorney this evening. Mr. Hartley had flu-like symptoms earlier this morning, so we ask him to vacate the premises. And not to come back if he didn't feel better. But with such an abbreviated agenda, we thought we could do without our attorney this evening. In fact, the meeting is gonna be so short that this is the first meeting that I haven't swapped out this chair.
The king's chair.
For the, for the smaller chair.
I asked him about it.
This chair's a little conspicuous when you sit in it, but. Anyway, each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of June 27th. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections. That was a short meeting, too.
Make a motion for approval, Mayor?
Thank you.
I'll thank you.
Okay. It's okay. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, each of you should have received a copy of the check register with your council packet, if you would indicate if you've received that register. Thank you. Let's see, under public comments, we have our very own Lori Saunders.
Yay.
You must have just got to say my name before you said 6:30.
No, no. Lori, we, we knew that you were coming when we established the over-under.
I don't wanna get the evil eye for an instant.
You won't.
You won't.
I'm looking.
I'll keep that in there. Well, first, I'd be remiss if I didn't put a shameless plug in for Steve the Feet Dinner Series that's starting out this Friday night. We're very excited. We think this is gonna be a great culinary showcase for Georgetown, and we're having tickets that have been on sale, and they are selling, and we're very excited about that. I don't know if you all noticed some of the chefs that we've got coming, but an amazing lineup with Jacob Cornato from Eight Up in Louisville. Louisville Courier-Journalist has called him the hottest chef in Louisville with the hottest restaurant. So, for all you hot people, y'all might wanna go to his restaurant and run, or you wanna come out, might wanna come out July 15th for that. And then Julian Stone, who's a sous chef, is gonna be on August 12th. And then we've got Jonathan Searle from Lockbox, which is huge to get him here, and we're also excited about Patrick Roney from Harvest, who's out of Louisville, too. So, I think they're gonna be all great events. Hopefully, y'all can make some of them, or at least try to attend. The good thing is, money does go back towards charity. So, that is the purpose of the benefits. It's for the charities to be able to get some funding back out of it and to showcase our Kentucky Proud and our local farmers' market, because all of the events will showcase Kentucky Proud foods, with the majority of the produce and products coming from Scott County farms. So, I think that's huge.
Lori, how do people sign up or get a reservation? What's the procedure?
They can go to www.localsfeekey.com and purchase tickets.
Okay, are there any other mechanisms? You got your little... Boy, y'all hit me at the same time.
My phone number's on the bottom. If they do not want to go there, if they will call me, I will take care of getting tickets for them. We can always do tickets at our office, or even in person at Local Fee, too.
Okay.
Either one. We won't turn away anybody, I promise.
Are these tickets separate for each event, or? Okay.
Each ticket is for a separate event, and they are priced differently, too.
Okay. So, what else for the 15th?
The 15th is $75.
Per person?
Per person.
Okay.
What you're going to get with that is four hors d'oeuvres during the cocktail party, and then you're gonna have a five-course dinner.
Okay.
And it will be paired with, uh...
The whites of wine. The whites of wine with the course.
Yes, and each one will be paired with a certain Kentucky wine or Kentucky bourbon, too.
Okay.
And that's what you'll see out of, out of most of them. The Yucca Land's gonna be a little bit different. It's gonna be kind of like an upscale cocktail party, so you're actually gonna walk around from station to station throughout the garden. So, I think that one will be a really fun one. And then at Ward Hall, we're looking at doing something with Kentucky traditions. So, it'll be more traditional foods, but it'll still be a five-course menu. And then Old Friends, we are doing kind of a French cuisine with Kentucky skin on it. So, all of them have numerous courses. You won't go home hungry, I promise you that.
Okay.
But the real reason I'm here tonight is for the Festival of the Horse, and I think Tracy has put the information in the packets for all of you. You'll take a look at them. The one that kinda takes care of everything is this sheet right here, to kinda give you an overview. And just so you know, before putting this together, I did meet with Public Works, Chief Bossy, the Fire Department, M.A., E.M.S., everyone that would need to be involved in the logistics. We sat down and worked out the schedule together in one room, and we're actually gonna have a follow-up meeting in August, just to go back over all of our plans logistically, to make sure we're in top form and ready to roll. The date has changed this year. We have moved from October to September, so the Julie Cook Off will be September the 8th, and then we will start with the festival on September the 9th, and we'll go through the 11th. We are doing things a little bit differently. Road closures will be a little bit different. On Thursday, we will close at 2:00 and open back up at 11:00, but we will close the City Hall parking lot at 11:00 P.M., because the carnival won't come in until that, that morning. On Friday, in the past, you're all used to seeing Broadway closed. We will not be closing Broadway at all this year. Changing the date has kinda changed the dynamics of the festival, so we will actually have a smaller footprint this year, so we will not need to close Broadway. Changing the date is gonna cause a little few growing pains, but we hope that they'll be good growing pains, because what we are specifically targeting is local crafters and local vendors. We're making a big push on getting, kinda changing the feel of the festival a little bit by targeting local crafters and, and vendors to come down and participate over the weekend. So, instead of closing Broadway and closing the streets early in the morning, we actually will not close Hamilton to Mulberry, or Mulberry to Broadway until 10:00 A.M., because the vendors are not gonna be required to set up and be ready at noon. They're actually gonna be ready to set up by 4:00 o'clock. So, we're changing that a little bit, and I think that'll eliminate some of the pressure that we've had with the roads, too. And we've taken that into consideration, that Broadway is a major fairway, and it does cause a lot of problems, and I know specifically for the Fire Department, if they have to make their run making their way out. So, we did take that into consideration when we, when we made the changes. We will continue with the parade on Friday night, though you're looking at Memorial and Broadway being closed at about 5:00 P.M., before the parade would start at 6:30. On Saturday, everything will remain the same. Vendors will come, will still be in, still be set up for Friday night. The day will start at 11:00, and then the parade route will close at 4:00. That comes off Memorial, where the grand parade of horses. And then we'll do the same thing again on Sunday, only we won't start the festival until 1:00, or 11:00, I'm sorry, 11:00. And then we'll have the pet parade at 1:00, and then we will close, open up the streets by 8:00 P.M., on Sunday evening. So, we are making a few changes to some things with the festival, too.
I've been really excited working with Lori on discussing some of these changes. We think moving the festival back into September can get us away from what seems to be a perpetually rainy weekend that we kept running into the first week of October. How many people said, please move it back to September? So, we went just a little earlier than some people thought. I also approve of the idea for, for this year, as we slightly retool the festival, not blocking Broadway. Concentrate the activity into, to an area that we can manage well and, and not disrupt traffic quite so badly. So, I'm just real encouraged by the plans that are being made.
And we're also excited, because this also does not fall, fall break for the schools that have gone for the college, so that gives greater opportunity for them to participate and be part of the community activities.
So, we, motion, thank you, that's what we need, a motion to approve the street closures. Was that your second choice? Thank you.
Motion, Connie, second choice?
Yes. Any questions for Lori about the street closing? Festival, seed to feet? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, also, anyone, please, for something else?
Of course you can.
I wanna say thank you to the Traffic Committee for all the members who are on that.
That would be these two.
That would, yes, it would be, Connie and Chuck. They have just really worked with us to try and come up with ways to eliminate the pressure for visitors who are downtown, and we're still working on that and still gathering up information. But we so appreciate that the efforts they're putting into it to try to eliminate that strain of our visitors going away with a ticket and a goodbye, come back, y'all.
A good combo, isn't it?
Yeah, we wanted to come back, so we just so appreciate everything that they've done to, to work with us on that. And we will be back at the next meeting with maybe some more information for them, but we thank them for that.
Speaking of downtown and the Traffic Committee, I was asked at the last council meeting about the one-way signs up here. Well, they'd gone up that morning, Chuck, and, and it's really worked well for the last couple of weeks. People seem to be following it. I've seen a couple refer to their old ways, but it seems to be helping out here.
And we're meeting Wednesday with Robert Bruin from Public Works and Megan Chan. We're actually gonna do a walkabout downtown to make sure that our parking spaces are, that our parking signs are located where they need to be for people to find the parking areas. Some of the park, public parking spaces, there's some confusion about where they can park, which is public, which is private, for the landowners, so we're gonna do a walkabout and see what we can do on that side of it, too, to eliminate some of the pressure.
You're talking about the far side of Main Street. I'd like to be on that walkabout with you.
Okay. Wednesday morning, 10:00 A.M., we're meeting at City Hall parking lot. Are you traveling?
Again. On the road again.
Well, Connie, if you'd wanna be there, I'd like to attend, we would love to have you.
I appreciate that, really, I do. 10:00?
Yep.
City Hall.
You got it. Walkabout.
I'll take a video way for you.
Yes, I can. Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
I'll be there, Lori, thank you.
Good. Under Mayor's comments, we've got a couple of things to discuss, but we've got one real important thing to do tonight, and that is to introduce the council to Scott Hall, who is the new Director of the Georgetown Scott County Revenue Commission. Scott began work on July 5th, and has, I ran into him at lunch today and asked him how he's going, and he said, "Well, I'm now into the deep end of the pool."
Can he swim?
I reminded Scott occasionally to come up for a breath.
There you go.
So, I wanted to introduce Scott to you all. The commission, which is now made up of Judge Lesby, myself, and Dr. Hub, are really excited about working with Scott and Scott's ability to build a solid operational foundation under our Revenue Commission with written procedures and written policies and methods of reporting that he and I are still discussing, so that Revenue Commission has very timely and consistent data being provided as we should be. So, Scott, with that introduction, would, would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
Sure. Well, thank you all very much for the opportunity. I'm very excited to be here. Also, a little bit of new news, thanks to Ms. Tackett. My wife and I will soon be residents of Georgetown. Help with Mr. Lesby as well. So, we have fallen in love with Georgetown over the last few weeks. My first five days here have been excellent. The support from Mayor, Judge Lesby, and everyone involved has just been tremendous. Andrew and I have already had several conversations, so, not to get too far down in the weeds, but, but basically, my goal here is to make the Revenue Commission a resource to not only this body, but the commission, and to no longer be a mystery. And anything that I can do to make that happen, I'm at your disposal. Very good.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where's the best cheeseburger in Georgetown?
Galvins. That's the only cheeseburger I've had in Georgetown.
That is true.
Kinda easy to get to, isn't it?
Best one I've had in a long, long time.
Yeah.
And I have been to Eight Up three times. It is delicious. Go if you can. Won't be disappointed.
I'll be calling you about buying tickets.
Tickets won't have to pressure you.
Scott comes to us, as, as you know, from Louisville, where he headed the Audit Division for the Louisville Revenue Commission. So, he's, he's used to numbers that are slightly larger than ours, but the beauty of that, he's used to a complex organization, and understands the need for legislative bodies to have great flow of information. It was music to my ears when I hear Scott say things like, "We're gonna remove the mystery of the Revenue Commission." And they were nodding heads all around this bench as you said that. So, that, that indeed is our challenge.
Transferred.
The challenge for me is gonna be one scale. The Louisville Metro Revenue Commission collects over half a billion dollars a year, and we do that with about 60 people, and process 7,000 tax returns a year, and we post approximately a little over 2 million transactions a year. So, definitely a, a different scale, but tax administration is tax administration, whether it's the IRS or Georgetown. So, some of the concepts are the same. I look forward to bringing my skill set here and try to make, as Mayor said in my final interview, make Georgetown the envy of our state tax agency cola, and people will be coming to us and say, "Hey, how'd you do it?"
That's awesome.
Yeah?
Very good.
Thank you all. Scott, well, thanks.
It's pretty exciting to be headed, like, forward in a way, to, you know, moving forward.
In real strong positive ways.
Yeah, yeah.
Really nice.
That, that is outstanding. Just, you all probably have gotten a, a mail notice at your home, but just wanted to remind you that the Kentucky League of Cities Annual Conference is October the 4th through the 7th. This year, it's in Lexington, so it's easy to attend. It doesn't require a hotel expense or anything, and if anybody is interested in attending, let us know. We'll be glad to register you, and, and the city should pay for that, it's my belief, as training opportunities. There are even one-day registrations available, so if you'd like to get on their website and look at the agenda, even if your work schedule won't allow you to stay the whole conference, there may be portions of it that will be useful for you. Just a reminder, next Tuesday on 7/19 at 6:00, we have our code enforcement meeting. That will be a workshop meeting where we're really gonna get down into the weeds on the new state statutes, so we understand what, what opportunities the General Assembly has, has provided for us, and then what our proposed way to use that, that statute. We have invited Judge Lesby, and he's gonna invite the magistrates. We've invited Mayor Christensen and Mayor Jones from Stampin' Ground, and if any members of their council would like to come. We envision this being a, starting off as a Georgetown code enforcement structure, but we've, the draft has been written in such a way that should the county and the other two cities wish to participate, they can do so by inter-local agreement. Both Sadieville and Stampin' Ground have indicated an interest in having more code enforcement assistance, and typically, the county covers those costs. Today, Andrew emailed you all a fairly lengthy draft ordinance. So, you should have received that via email today, so you can have a full week to review what's in our proposed ordinance. Anybody wants hard copies, Tracy's got some here, and looking forward to really making some progress here. As we've talked about this, I think in, in the email back to Mayor's Christensen and Jones, Andrew characterized it as one of the most comprehensive pieces of legislation that the council has done in 10 years. This is a complete rebuild of code enforcement, so it's right in our sweet spot right now, and, and we'll start on that next week. If any of you had trouble getting through to City Hall today, we had phone issues today. Interestingly enough, we got hacked.
I'm not surprised.
Apparently, as we learned from, from NetGain, big companies aren't always the target, and the purpose of us being hacked was to use our phone for international calls.
Low-town话里靠住你.
Yeah. Thankfully, Time Warner very quickly noticed that unusual activity and shut our system down.
That's good.
So, it's taken us a while to get it back up today, and we are, we currently have before us a proposal from NetGain to help us evaluate our security, our data security, and I'm reviewing that proposal. I kidded with some of the NetGain officials today about they, them doing the hack has prompted us into this security evaluation, but we think we have that solved at this point. I was out of town, but Millie Conway sat in with a, our consultants were in town and all sat around a table, Millie, I understand, for three-plus hours.
Three and a half hours.
And...
Good, good meeting.
Did a deep dive into some of this material. They will be back on site at least once, perhaps twice, and then that will culminate with a report to the full council. We'll prob, we will then need to take some time to evaluate the content of that report and some of the options that will be in it. What we know already is that residential rates may be adequate today. Our, as we knew, and Karen, we talked about this before, our business rates make no rhyme or reason. They're all over the board for reasons we don't completely understand, and they're really slogging through that information to try and help us make sense of our business rates. And their, their oversimplified explanation on our business rates is we can leave them as they are, which is not a good option. We can change them to some coherent fee structure that really addresses the two, cost to business, or number three, we can get out of the commercial business. And they're just that blunt. There are ways to do this and do it well, and they're gonna give us the choices that we'll get to make. So, pretty excited about some of their conclusions. These also helped us shift our thinking a little bit. Millie, when we sat down to begin with, we thought that as we offer recycling, we would offer it on a voluntary basis for those who wish to participate. These consultants have very strongly recommended that if we're going to do recycling, that we offer every one of our citizens a package that includes recycling, and that our utilization rates of recycling will always be a nemic until we take that bold step, and that will be one of their recommendations to you. But you will be brought a menu of options, and these will be council decisions on how we move forward. In case you have not seen the big flashing signs in town, tomorrow evening is an almost free rabies clinic. Every veterinarian in Scott County is participating tomorrow evening, exams and rabies shots for $5 an animal.
Oh, gee.
So, that's almost free.
Where's that gonna be?
It's at...
Which Cleveland Clinic?
All five of them.
All of them?
All of them.
I think except for Kentucky.
It's a collaborative, interestingly enough, WIDCO Health District put this collaborative together through the veterinarians to address potential rabies issues for public health. Now, I'm gonna guess Sassy Boots has all her shots.
She's going tomorrow.
She'll be in attendance.
She's scheduled for tomorrow.
Let's see. We laid at everybody's plate, everybody's plate, everybody's place, the FFA. Just wanted to make you all aware of, of that event, and had my first sit-down opportunity. Others of you have had a chance to talk with Kevin Hub. He visited this morning with the judge and I. He's on duty, and he's begun his rounds, meeting folks. Very impressive young man, and I think we're, we've recently invited some real strong leadership to our community, and, and Dr. Hub is on the job as well. That's the end of Mayor's comments.
You better hustle.
Oh, I better hurry here. We, under, Andrew is part of the agenda, we had a resolution to apply for a Homeland Security Grant. We just always brought those to you all for approval. Actually, the deadline was yesterday, but it's now be extended to next Thursday, so I think that's in your pocket. We're simply asking your permission to see. Thank you. Motion's been made?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Early. Any questions about that grant? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, Chief Bossy and others, along with Andrew, have been working hard to make our backups unified police protection system easier for new communities to join, if they choose to. The process has been pretty unwieldy since it's done through an inter-local, and literally every time a new city or county wanted to join, all 26 agencies had to redo an inter-local agreement. So, working with Senator Thayer and others, we, we successfully got some language done through the General Assembly that makes that process easier for agencies to enter or leave the backups unified policing inter-local.
Need a motion, ma'am?
Robert, that, that's about the full explanation, isn't it? And, yes, ma'am, we do need a motion.
I'm going with it, 'cause I think it's great.
Yeah, it is.
They're just, they've just made it better.
They certainly have. Mr. Bradley with the second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I finished in 29 minutes. Opposed? I finished in 29 minutes. Now, it's up to the council to say if we're out by 6:30 or not.
There we go. 6:30 down. You're not done, Eric.
I know. Oh.
I was thinking there was something, but I forgot about it.
Well, if you think about it, write it down. We'll get it the next week.
Send us an email. I have nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you.
Too much pressure, forget it. Go on.
David?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Nope.
Millie?
I just want to talk to the Traffic Committee sometime about an issue that a resident had and brought to my attention. And I told-
Do you want to come for the meeting?
Well, yes, I would like to.
There you go.
Let me tell you when the next one is.
Tell me when it is.
It's Monday. Before the, yeah. At 4:30.
At 4:30. Okay.
And-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A number of our council members, particularly that live on West Main Street vicinity-
Yeah.
Have talked about sidewalks in that area of town. And I know that, Chuck, you had a conversation with Senator Thayer. Well, you all were talking about a traffic light. You get reports back-
Yeah, I was the person in the traffic light at Cardinal.
Yeah. You all have probably seen the large article in the newspaper that Senator Thayer did have the District 7 send us a grant application. The window opens August 1st. It closes, I think, the end of August, end of September. We would like to have an application in at the earliest part of that window. The step that we're trying to take, rather than just throwing something on a wall that might not stick, Andrew knows some folks in that division that handles this grant. And we're trying to determine what the total grant pool size is. And that will help us scale the size of our request. We don't want to make a request that's going to overwhelm a small grant pool. They're just going to turn it down. So, we're trying to make sure that we shoot as accurately at this opportunity as we can. So, we're seeking more information before we actually submit that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In conjunction with that, I would, I talked with Andrew, and I would hope that we could talk to Kyle, because we need some type of a design and some type of an estimate for our part. I mean, if it's 80/20, you know, 20% of what, you know, so.
And we need that number for both council purposes to evaluate our ability to pay the 20% and not overwhelm the grant pool with their 80%.
Yes, yes. So, we kind of got to talk to Kyle, figure out how we can move forward. Before we have fun.
With that little bit of information, is there anything else to come before the council?
Uh, no.
We're adjourned. 33 minutes. That is our record. Scott, thank you for sticking around for us.